Close meeting to order, Union City, Ohio Village Council, July eighth, twenty twenty-five. Homero, minute, with the word of prayer.
In the name of the Father and the Son and the Holy Spirit, amen. Dear God, we give you this morning, this meeting opportunity, please take away our despair of yesterday, that would keep us bound, please open our path and illuminate our minds of community spirit moving forward one step at a time. Make us whom you would have us be, that we might do as Jesus would have us do. Remove all anger, fear and pain, may the Holy Spirit be with us all at this meeting, amen. In the name of the Father and the Son and the Holy Spirit, amen.
Stand for the pledge. All right, pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and the good republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, rule call.
Cheyenne Tedrow.
Here.
Ron Ramer. Eric Crass.
Here.
Eddie Lang.
Here.
Homer Somon.
Present.
David Wagaman.
Here.
I'd like to make a motion to excuse Ron Ramer.
Second. Who should I put? Cheyenne and Eddie. Eric Crass.
Yes.
Eddie Lang.
Yes.
Homer Somon.
Yes.
David Wagaman.
Yes.
Cheyenne Tedrow.
Yes.
Motion for approval of the agenda. Second.
Eddie Lang.
Yes.
Homer Somon.
Yes.
David Wagaman.
Yes.
Cheyenne Tedrow.
Yes.
Eric Crass.
Yes.
Okay, next portions for village citizens, or anyone who wishes to speak. Dixie.
Park lot looks great, the bank parking lot looks so clean and neat.
Oh, yeah, oh Nationals, yeah.
It's, to me, it's the bank.
Yeah, I get what you're saying, yes, it does look good, I did notice it was landscaped.
Thank you. Anything else?
Matt, Matt's got a comment today.
The only reason I'm here, I thank you for hearing me out, I bought this house down on Main Street. It used to be a church called Come As You Are. Forget the name of the side street. Anyway, it's, church itself is forty-six by sixty-six, it's a great big square church, not square, but great big church. And there's twenty-four hundred square feet in it. And the yard, it's a huge yard, it's a hundred and ten by a hundred and five yards. Sycamore, I think, is the side street there.
Yeah.
Well, I would like to have the option to make that into a duplex. And it seems plenty big enough, I don't know, but the reason I say that is, just north of there, you go across the railroad tracks, there's like a one and a half car garage that was made into a little family dwelling. And you could put three or four of those in that church. So I would hope that, I would just like to ask you if I could have the option of making that into a duplex. I'm not positive, might be a single family, but I would like to at least have that option if I go with the duplex, I'd like to do that. That's my question.
Okay, Matt, that would be zoning, you checked into that corner, okay.
I suggested he come and have a discussion with council this evening.
Well, I do know if it goes into a duplex, each unit's got to have their own water meter.
Okay. I'm willing to go by the rules, you know.
So you're basically looking at two twelve hundred square foot apartments, is that what you're wanting to do?
Yeah. Which are, is very roomy, they're big, you know, each one would be, oh, you know, a twelve hundred be. I just put a wall right down the middle, you know, one side, the other side.
Is that spot zoned, or is that zoned residential, or what?
Should be zoned residential, per as I know.
Corner of Sycamore, right? Main, Main and Sycamore, yeah.
Sorry?
That's Main and Sycamore.
Yes, sir.
Right.
Yeah.
Homer's been there.
Twelve hundred square feet per apartment is really pretty small, and I'm just not in favor of that.
Like I mentioned, go across railroad tracks.
We're not discussing across railroad tracks, we're discussing your property, nothing else.
All right, I was just comparing.
Yep. That's my suggestion.
I have a question, if it's all right, does it have to be a duplex? I mean, is it?
It doesn't have to be, but I would like to have that option. I haven't decided exactly what I want to do yet, you know, I'm just in the process of cleaning it up, tidying it up, fixing it up. It was sat empty for quite a while, so it needs a little TLC. Excuse me, but Homer, you were in there.
Yes.
It seemed planning big enough for.
You're, you're looking real estate magazines and advertisements and stuff, that, twelve hundred square feet is like a minimum for a living unit.
I thought nine hundred was.
Pretty small.
Yeah, I agree, but twelve hundred.
You take, you get above two, three people for a unit like that, and, and.
Definitely it could be a family rental.
It's not going to be a family rental.
Young couples.
It's gonna be a starting out unit.
Yeah, something like that.
Right. Perfect for young couples.
I have another question, are you gonna, do you plan on living on the other half, or you're just gonna rent out both sides?
Well, I'm gonna live in half of it for a while, and see what the future holds, like, I don't know if I'm gonna live there the rest of my life or not, you know how that is. Yeah, I plan on doing part of it. There's just plenty of parking, plenty of yard. Seems like there's plenty of space.
So currently, if it's residential, then you'd be talking about rezoning it to, it'd have to be rezoned to a
Yes, because that whole area is R-one-C residential, one unit.
There's, excuse me, there's buildings right across the street, there's three and four apartments in the building, you know, there's just rentals everywhere around there. Not a single family dwelling. Right across the street, everywhere.
I understand what you're doing, but I look at it like this, we've got enough rental properties in this town already. I'd like to see people that want to invest in the community and buy versus renting, that's just my opinion.
Well, I'm buying it.
Right, but keep it, make it one decent sized home. For sell down the future, that in ten years or whatever, the property goes up on the market, now a family could move into it versus having two more rentals in town. We've got plenty of rentals in town, I would much rather see homeowners come into town, just my opinion. We've got too many rentals, in my opinion, in this village already, and that's the shape of, you drive around, you look at the houses, there's not enough pride in the community, and a lot of it is the rental, the landlords, because they don't take care of their properties. Yeah, you turn it into a two unit today, yeah, you're gonna live there for X amount of years, but then you decide to sell, then what's the next guy do with the property? I'd rather see it stay as a single family dwelling.
But it has not been a single.
Right, it's been a church that you want to convert, so if we're gonna convert something, I'd rather see, especially where that's located at, be a single family dwelling.
The, the living room itself is much bigger than this room right here.
I'm not arguing, I'm just telling you my opinion.
All right, I appreciate that.
As you're converting this from a church to a living facility, is there an issue with just making it a one family dwelling?
Is there an issue, I mean.
Yeah. To have that as just a single property.
Well, that was, I mean, I haven't decided to make it a duplex or just a single family dwelling. If somebody came up and offered me, you know, of course, I, I'm not gonna sell it for a while, you know, because I like it, you know, but I don't know what the future holds, you know, but it's, it's, it's well maintained, it's pretty much maintenance free, you know, it's a nice building, it's a nice neighborhood, you know. I don't, I don't, I wouldn't foresee any problems. Of course, that's easy to say, it's hard to predict.
So what I understand, recommendation from zoning is to keep it as a single, if anything, a single family property.
Yep, we're gonna change it to a mall, to two family property, we're gonna have to bring it to a vote with council, because that's a single family residential, we're gonna have to spot zone that for two family residential.
I personally think we should ask the residents before we make that decision of living in the neighborhood.
That's right, the neighborhood.
Because I think they should have a say, what gives us six people up here the right to determine what they're getting moved in next to.
Right, so we'll have to send a letter out and have a council, or a public hearing.
Public hearing.
Because this isn't like, I don't think we have the right to make that decision for all those residents in that neighborhood. It's been a church, church all these years, it's quiet most nights of the week, we don't know who's gonna rent that. And if there's elderly people in the area, people that have to get up at four o'clock in the morning, partiers move in after you sell it, that's what I'm looking at, because I honestly, honestly don't think you're gonna live there more than five years. I think you're gonna fix it up, your whole plan is never to be a one single story, it's to be a duplex, that's what you want, in my opinion. And you're gonna get the duplex set up, and then you're gonna rent both sections out, and you're on your way, your happy, merry way, that's my opinion. And then, we're gonna be stuck with whoever you decide to put in. That's my opinion.
Everybody has their own opinion, but there's different ways to look at it.
Revenue, revenue strains how you're looking at it, you can take that twenty-four hundred, make two, two apartments, rent them both out for seven, eight hundred dollars. Now you've got fifteen hundred dollars coming into your wallet every month with minimal overhead.
But this is America.
Oh, I, I understand, but I'm also thinking of my community, this is my community, I was born here, I was raised here, I've been here my whole life. And what I see going on in my community is, it just upsets me, tremendous. And here we are, if anything, a single family, so maybe a family can grow into our community, that's what I want.
Well, if you could send a letter out to the neighbors, that might be an option, you know.
We can do that.
Well, thank you.
And see what, see what the, the general feel of it is.
Thank you.
We can't guarantee you anything.
Right, right.
I'll coordinate with you a date and time.
Okay, anything else?
No, sir.
Okay.
Thank you, please.
Appreciate your time, your last name, Matt?
Flatter.
Flatter?
F as in Fred, L-E-T-T-E-R, Flatter.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Project updates.
Nothing earth shattering, we're working with the CIC to have a presentation from GroTec International come in and basically formally present what they want to do to the potential industrial park and looking for a letter of intent on the property so that they can basically close the gap when their financing, you know, funding. So that's where all that lies, should be hearing from the Ohio Future Fund in the region very soon. Our, our last conversation with them was the end of July, first, or end of June, third part of July, and we're obviously right there, so.
That meeting, I'm gonna assume any, the council wants to be there at that CIC meeting.
You don't have a date yet?
Yes. Seventeenth.
It's an open public meeting, so anybody's permitted to be there.
Be here.
It'll be Thursday, here, at five thirty. I believe that Brunz is also going to be here that night, correct?
That is correct.
Brunz and GroTec. Okay, committee reports, the CIC did meet last Thursday. Thank you for the minutes.
Yeah, basically, it's just what Steve said about GroTec International, we spoke about, and then the other stuff on the agenda, if you have any questions?
Any questions?
No.
For me though?
Pretty all self-explanatory in those notes.
Okay. That's ongoing, I know Steve, you're probably still getting phone calls, I'm still getting phone calls.
I got three people about Water Street today, show up bright and early on that set before ten AM today.
Yeah, I, I had a conversation about forty minutes today, so I, I met with Mr. Walker Monday morning at eight. We have come to a verbal agreement, working on a contractual agreement between the village and Mr. Walker and his business to look at for a short period of time, relocating him over here to the old Warren Sunoco lot to stage his equipment. That's already a commercially zoned property, the only thing he asked is that he could put security cameras on the existing poles, which, you know, that's not a, a big deal.
His cost?
The conversation also included extending an opportunity for him to relocate his actual business from Cannon, Ohio to Union City, which he is going to be willing to consider, so theoretically, we're taking a bad situation and potentially turning it into a new business here in Union City. We'll just have to see how those conversations go, he's, he's been notified by the zoning board, you know, if he does not comply, I, I'm assuming that's going to turn into legal actions in a, in a court argument. From that point, you know, obviously him voluntarily entering into an agreement with the village makes more sense for him financially and for the village as well, so in our initial conversation, his plan is to, to move out of the village by the end of the year, that's why I'm thinking short term.
Just parking him over there, getting him out of sight.
Tying him to an agreement, which will be, you know, him agreeing that he's not going to park anything on Water Street at their, their rental home and so on and so forth, so getting that drawn up, having another meeting, having him sign it, I, I think is the quickest, most practical avenue to travel. CIC agreed, so we're moving in that direction.
Short term, we don't have any future plans for that corner right now, so nobody's looking at it, so that would be an avenue if he's looking at getting out. That was the CIC's reasoning behind allowing him out there.
I have formally communicated all of that to the neighbors, so they are aware of where things are at, and that we're working on it, but as with most every situation, he too has rights, he has the right to appeal the zoning board, he has the right to request a variance, he has all those rights and capabilities, and he, he could, you know.
Is he the property owner?
No. His girlfriend's parents own the house.
No, I was just wondering if he was the property owner, so I just kinda wonder what kind of rights he has at that point, if he's not.
He's been invited to live there, which theoretically in the court alone makes him his resident.
Gotcha.
It's branched out now, phone calls I'm getting are like from two blocks away.
Yeah.
You know, I mean.
Yeah.
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 So.
And it's, it's terrible that it gets to that.
Yeah.
And, and like I said, I've been dealing with it for about thirty days, that's when I was brought into the conversation, from what I gather, it's been taking, or been going on for about three months in total. So quicker notification, quicker communications, quicker conversations make all this go a lot smoother, but it is a nasty, ugly process when it doesn't go as people believe it should, so.
Or if somebody has parked the wrong direction on a street, been ticketed, and then they drive by there and they see the vehicles set for days at a time parked the wrong direction. They're asking why, why?
We don't do parking violations or park on the wrong side of the road.
Don't we?
We don't do parking violations.
And my, my biggest concern down there was just the safety aspect. If Chris has got, Chris or Eric's gotta get a fire truck, an ambulance through there, there was point, there was different times that you couldn't get, I couldn't hardly get my little car through there. At least it's working on, it's working.
We're working on getting it all cleaned up and rectified, so.
Okay. Ordinance and resolutions. Ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash oh oh four. An ordinance approving and authorizing the mayor of the village of Union City, Dark County, Ohio, to enter into a contract for emergency medical services and fire protection for the township of Jackson, Dark County, Ohio, and setting the compensation and terms for said services and protections. That was the third and final reading, I just need a motion to pass.
Motion to pass.
Second.
Homer Somon.
Yes.
David Wagaman.
Yes.
Cheyenne Tedrow.
Yes.
Eric Crass.
Yes.
Eddie Lang.
Yes.
Okay. Old business.
Can't say anything about the cats?
Um, yes, no, he's working on how to craft an ordinance, there is no such similar legislation anywhere. He could identify, not even a hundred percent clear that it can be done via state statute, so he's looking into it, he's doing some research.
Kinda figured that was gonna be said, because they always say that they're a predator.
Is there any updates with, I know what Mark had said he wanted to do with like the trap nutter release, I mean, I think that's not gonna fix the whole problem, but certainly it'll slow it down.
I, I, I think he's still planning on doing something with that system, I think it's, I, I think the overarching issue is the logistics of getting a vet here and, and a timeframe to go.
To be a trap.
Basically do the work, and we can do what we can do to collect cats and market and advertise for people to bring cats in.
Okay.
There, there's no ordinance saying that the homeowners can't catch, trap these cats, right? Just double check.
They, they should be able to trap any type of rodent or predator.
Eric wants to know his yard barefoot by next week.
No, I'm just tired of it, it kills my grass.
Yeah. Okay, anything else under old business? New business. Uh, first up, Neco Water Soft, Water Software Renewal.
It's under twenty-five hundred dollars, but I still wanted to present to council after this last month, it's a software that we use for our water meters, so I kinda need you guys to approve it, because I don't know what our other options are.
Basically, this is the annual service agreement.
Yeah.
I make a motion to pay Meco Waters, Smart Water, Smart Solutions Water Powered, one thousand nine hundred and fifty-three dollars for the renewal fee.
Second.
David Wagaman.
Yes.
Cheyenne Tedrow.
Yes.
Eric Crass.
Yes.
Eddie Lang.
Yes.
Homer Somon.
Yes.
Next up, disposal of old server computer towers.
Gary Elliott came in last week to replace our server computer, and we have old towers in there, and he didn't know what we wanted done with them. He said that he could dispose of them properly, where the village can keep the hard drive, but he can take the shell of them, just to get rid of the bulk of the towers that we have over there. If you guys wanna store the towers and the hard drive over there, that's perfectly fine, I'll just need to find a different storage solution. If you guys wanna store the towers and the hard drive over there, that's perfectly fine, I'll just need to find a different storage solution.
They're not bringing any value.
No, they're just, yeah.
It's just scrap.
Can they, can they wipe everything to make sure all?
Yeah, he's gonna give us back the hard drive, so that we have those.
What, what are they gonna do is to keep the hard drives?
Because we have to maintain the records and the data that's on there.
Okay, I'm just asking.
Yeah.
It's easier to just file away the hard drive in a folder in a filing cabinet than it is to maintain the whole time.
Do we have any type of like cloud software that we could upload it to, or is that just too much to get it to convert?
We are not going to cloud, that would be a goal, but I, I need us to get to.
We need to get the other stuff taken care of first.
I need us to get to fi- a position of financial stability, and we need to know where we're at. Meeting the requirements for, um, data storage, com- computer processes for state and federal governments, and, and a lot of grant funding moving forward. We've got a lot of work to do, and it's not going to be cheap to get there. Can get there, but it's not going to be cheap.
We gotta know where we're at first. Well, do you need a motion for that?
I didn't know if I did or not, except for the data that's stored on them, or.
Yeah, the, the data needs to be saved.
As long as the data's saved, then it's gonna create space, I don't see an issue with it, like, we're gonna store versus storing this, how we're storing this, right?
Scraping the old towers.
Basically what it's gonna come down to, correct?
Yes.
So, whatever we gotta do to consume space, I don't, I don't feel that that needed to come to, you know, just my opinion, I think that could've been something you guys could've handled.
I'm kinda confused here.
Message received.
Something like that makes sense.
I think it actually falls under like surplus, in the past, the council has voted just to dispose of that surplus.
I agree with you there, but when there's no money value involved, there's like, these computers change so much from year to year, so that there's no money value for us there to generate, then you just move forward with the smart solution.
You guys in agreement?
Yes.
Just to let him go ahead and handle it?
It's easier to ask now, but it's.
Yeah, because I would get rid of them, and then they'd be asking where the computer tower is.
I mean, as long as it doesn't cost us anything to get rid of the, the towers, I mean.
It will cost us a little bit, because to dispose of it correctly, it's gotta go to like pollution solution, something like that, but it's, it's a minimal cost.
Better than getting in the way of the storage, I mean, if you.
Okay, anything else under new business? Okay, emergency business or ordinances, anything?
I, I will let you know that we are getting closer to the interlocal agreement with the Indiana side. Chance and Mara, the two attorneys are going back and forth, working out the fine details, so hopefully, within the next thirty to forty-five days, I have something for you guys to begin reviewing and, and look to pass.
Call of the council, anything, anybody would like to add?
This might be being addressed, but there's property on Oak that sits next to, um, the old antique shop.
It's already being addressed.
Okay, uh, because I've had probably ten people, and it's like they're building off of.
Yeah, it's, it's in the process of being stopped.
Okay.
The health department's involved, our local ordinance officers involved, we've had face-to-face conversations. It, it's just another one of those things that it's gotta go through the process.
You talking about the one without the roof?
Um, it's next to Reno.
It's, it's a house, and then there's a, I, I'm going to say, uh.
It was a camper, yeah.
Oh.
They use like the foundation of that camper to build and attach to the house. That hasn't been lived in in at least five, ten years that I'm aware of.
We, we are working with the health department to get all that cleaned up and shut down.
Thank you.
Is there a, uh, two oh-three, I think, it's two oh-three right across Deerfield, uh, Deerfield and Ray Road right there. That old greenhouse, that's part of the siding on it, there's, uh, somebody, uh, in there, uh, squatter, maybe living in the building.
I'll have Kyle take care of that tomorrow.
It's a mess.
We'll address it.
I guess as we get complaints, I've been passing them on to either Steve or indoor Brittany.
Yeah, you guys don't get to wait till a council meeting, please message Brittany or myself and we'll.
Just pass it on, and then they contact Kyle to get involved.
I have Kyle's number on my whiteboard.
The same day, so.
Have we got the like new renters, like the house comes vacant, the inspection thing set up yet?
Ch- Chance is working on, I don't physically have it back yet, but he, he does have it.
And then, the other day, a couple weeks ago, they ran the street sweepers down there, and Chad asked me if I could get the cars off the road. So just some, you know, brainstorming, problem, solution, you know, I looked down central towards the nursing hole, and there's tons of cars parked on the road, there always is. But if there was a day that we could pick one day a month, like during the summer, fall, you guys wanted to run the sweeper, and maybe we designate different areas, zones of the city, that was just my thought, that maybe we could put this on the back of the water bill.
We, we.
And we could say, hey, on this day, could you avoid parking in the street so we can access the road?
Get the entire street done.
Right, and I, I was just wondering if that would be an option, that maybe we could do that.
It's absolutely, absolutely an option, but there, there's, there's logistics that, that play into running that sweeper. If it's pouring down rain, they don't necessarily run it, even though it doesn't hurt it to do it in rain. Um, it, you know, if, if it's storming, they don't do it, if, if there's a storm the night before and there's a bunch of brush pickup, they don't do it, so it can't, it, it will be a little bit of a, of a struggle to, to have a hard and fast regimented.
It was just an idea.
To do it.
If we could.
I don't disagree, because there, the sweeper's constantly snaking in and out of co- parked cars.
Oh, I know.
On every single street, it is completely frustrating for the guy driving it and operating it to have to leave all that traffic.
At some point, that could become a safety issue, I mean.
It, it can, but it.
I mean, it was just a thought, like, I don't know, maybe even if we looked at the thirty day forecast and tried, I, I don't know, it's just, if you can, like Chad said, hey, can you move the car, and I said, you got two hours, because I'm hooking up the boat, and then I gotta move it so I can hook up the camper, so, yeah, I could move it for about two hours. And then if he doesn't get here by then, I gotta, because I was leaving, so, but my whole thought was, you know, I know like my side, the north side of the street, there's that alleyway, most people have access, they could park behind their houses on that side.
Yeah, we, we can, we can take a look at that and try.
The south side of the street's not really gonna be an option for some of the residents, getting in the next block towards the nursing hole.
I just know there's, there's operational things.
That makes sense, I didn't think about that.
Running the same day every week, so.
Or not even every week, it was just once a month, is what I was thinking.
Well, we can absolutely take a look at that.
And then, if you could, say something to the guy spraying, next time, maybe do a little better job, make sure they don't hit my flowers. Because they were over three foot away from the sidewalk, from the curb that they were spraying, and now they're all welded up on the ends. I'm not complaining, I'm glad they're spraying, but now I got flowers dying, and so you can be a little more careful if they get, because I know I got a lot of flowers, don't get me wrong, you go by my house, you're gonna be like, man, this guy's got too many flowers, we could kill them. I do enough of that when I weed eat, trust me, I hear about it from the wife, but, you know, they're, they're a full sidewalk away from the road, you know?
It could be weather and conditions.
Oh, no, it's poison.
There's a little bit of breeze.
It's.
Well, yeah, but if there was a breeze, it could carry the chemicals.
And the only reason I know is because I've done it before, I know what it does.
I will address it.
Just be a little more careful, that's all I ask.
Anything else? Okay, communications and announcements, as we mentioned, uh, C I C meeting, July seventeenth at five thirty, we're gonna have that in there. And then the next council meeting will be held here, July twenty-second at six PM. Uh, do we need an executive session? Okay, uh, motion to adjourn or recess?
Motion to adjourn.
Cheyenne Tedrow?
Yes.
Eric Russ?
Yes.
Eddie Lang?
Yes.
Homer Solomon?
Yes.
David Wagaman?
Yes.
Thank you for coming.